Oh, God.
Mics are coming on. Okay, mics are coming on. That may, you know. I'm going to call to order a meeting for May 6th of the Hastings and Hudson Board of Education. Welcome. We're going to open up this evening a public hearing on our 2025-26 school budget. And I think we're going to take a look. You want to hit some updates before we? No?
Oh, wait, are we just doing the public? Are we done with the public hearing?
No, we're opening up for the public hearing.
Do the public hearing, then we'll go.
Okay. So if there's anybody who would like to speak? No? Okay, thank you. Moving on, moving on, thank you. And then we do have, of course, public comment coming up separately later, so. We're going to move on to update and district highlights from Dr. McCursie.
And can you hear me? Good.
All right.
The way we're structuring, is that good now? Yeah, the way we're structuring the superintendent updates is to focus first on the budget with an update there and have a document that I'll run you through efficiently. We'll then see if there are questions, comments, discussions from the board regarding the budget. Then shift to an update on the bond. This is all part of the superintendent's report. And then see if there are questions and all there. We originally, tonight, given the budget vote is coming at us first, we're going to focus there only. But there's a lot of energy around the bond and some exciting new information we can share tonight regarding the bond. So let me first go into the budget update. For those of you on the board and those out in the public who follow us closely, this presentation is a version of what was given to the PTSA last week. It's been divided in half, updated in some central ways, especially for the bond. So it's very important, though, that this is now putting it into the public record. PTSA is a wonderful place and wonderful meeting. This, though, now is in the formal public record. So what we've done with the budget is, first off, from a communications standpoint, we've been working really hard. So we have a designated icon as it relates to the budget. And as you see, we have one for the bond. They both have the date on it. Just if you know Ezra Elliott, the Chair of our Department of Art, pulled me aside and said, whoever did that bill, great work. But that's Southern West District Boses who had done that. So that's part of the partnership there. Very important to remember in the budget, we've worked really hard with the board and the board adopted a budget that is at the tax cap. In this sheet here, you can see in very direct, clear explanation that that was a heavy lift. It was about a 1.3 million set of reductions, which is the rest of this very tight budget summary will show is we got to a good place. We need to do that heavy lift. You as a board, way back in the beginning, it said administrators, bring us a budget within the tax cap. That's out of respect, out of respect for the voters here in Hastings. You know, later Alex and others can explain that differentials need be between the levy tax growth and the proposed tax rate increase. You don't have to read the fine print here, but this is the public record. This is very important now, the final budget as we move into next year. Now, as you know, as a board, education is wonderful and life happens in education. So students may show up, things may change. So obviously budgets change. Facility-wise, even within the operating budget, things happen within our facilities that require us to spend money in ways that are different than budgeted. But as you know, every single shift or change in the budget, you will approve. But this is the specific adopted budget that the village will be voting on on May 20th. Now, what we've done here is to show in summary what this budget does for Hillside. And there'll be slides following for the middle school and for the high school. And we actually like this as a good summary presentation, narrative, hitting strongly learning environment, creative expression, what's happening with academic and social emotional support, 21st century skills and community and growth with supporting points there. We've taken the approach in this summative document behind the two slides on the dollar figures, the numbers, to say this is the narrative that explains Hillside as this budget allows it. So really stressing creativity and growth at Hillside. In some of the materials for Hillside, you'll see we're referring to new space. Well, that's this space, which isn't brand new, but it's this idea of what we can do here. It's also referring to the new classrooms now, a year or two old. There are support, mental health support services, student services, facilities. That's not brand new, but new. We then go to Farragut Middle School. As you know, as a board, because you approved it, this is a budget investing in the middle school, trying to address quite directly a set of priorities that you first heard about in January 2024 in terms of the FMS Action Plan. But here on one page, we hit the headlines in terms of class size and schedule adjustments. New staff. Melissa can explain better than me that that nine or not nine, brand new. It's a mixture of some re-
Some retirees being-
Yeah.
Some retirees are being replaced, some are new positions. Yeah.
But it is an important bolstering within the budget of what's really needed at FMS. Enhanced support programs, that's very, very important, bringing really to full sense academically the supports we have. We had been there in one way, but not fully for our students. And then some important new offerings, which are listed here. High school, a lot here, a lot of work, as you know. Probably the biggest amount of work on the budget was related to the high school. We had come with one approach as an administration, a lot of comments from families, students, faculty. Your own comments as a board, so we made some significant adjustments, staying within that tax cap. And those are really the headlines there, that we balance, we think, quality in the budget. We maintain the student experience, very important there. All the APs currently offered will be offered. And we're going to keep the average class sizes under 20. You as a board probed on that because averages are averages, but we showed in other documents that are in the record that we're not far off that in most of the classes. And indeed, the core ninth, 10th, and 11th grade academic classes all sit right near that average of 20. Staffing strategy, very important because that was a big issue. Initially showed up with a budget that was not replacing three retirees. Those positions now will all be fully replaced with either a full-time hires or redirection of staff. So we've been able to handle that. And with a tight budget, a quite significant expansion for the science research program. This is a program that's already one of the best in the tri-state area. That was at a two-year design, 11th and 12th grade, a feeling for a while, could you expand it to the 10th grade? We're now able to do that. Melissa, tell us about the demand over supply that we learned about two weeks ago at that, the science. I don't think neither of you and I could be there because of other district work, but you have the summary.
Yeah, I think, so right now, there is so much demand for our science research program. We, it's a beautiful thing. It's also a challenging thing. And so thinking about readiness and interest and making sure that there is a lot of grit and perseverance and a true deep desire to engage with this program. Our department chairperson, Melissa Shandroff, is really working a lot of magic to help ensure that students figure out through a rigorous application process whether or not the program is right for them. We do have a ton of interest. And again, we have students winning awards nationally, internationally. And our department is really committed to cultivating the next wave of learners. And also with the understanding that this is not for the faint of heart. It is a bold, rigorous, empowering program. So we are in process trying to figure out how we best find those matches and really amplify our science research program.
So in this presentation so far, a little clue is that for each of the schools, what you've seen on these slides is a reduction of the featured article for each school in the budget newsletter. And the budget newsletter, we think, is ready to go and will be ready to go, we hope, being mailed out over the weekend, Monday at the latest. I think Melissa D., is that what we're aiming for? So it'll be, this is required by the state and it's also a good requirement. Good old-fashioned, hard copy of this will show up in all of the households in Hastings. Many, many eyes have been over this, looked at it. This year, it is in both directly in English and Spanish. In past years, we have had it as English where you can then go to the website to get the Spanish version. We've put both here together. So we think it's a good summary. This almost becomes a companion piece, this PowerPoint presentation, because what you see again for each of the schools, this is a reduced version of what's featured as the articles here. Very important in this budget is special education. There are two slides here summarizing in particular our strong commitment to special ed from the standpoint of moving towards coherence and excellence. Featuring here, the arrival effect of August 1 of Jean Ferrigio as the interim Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services, emphasizing we are maintaining the two Assistant Directors for continuity, relationship management, and orientation with families. It's very important to the Hillside staff that we maintain the Assistant Director here. When we went to two, that was an addition here. That's Marie Angela Sanchez. In the Farragut complex, it's Tesfer Stewart. So that we feature that here. There are a set of program enhancements listed here across the district in maintaining certain areas, ICTs, expanding ICT in certain areas. Very much important that we bolster the earth science work at the middle school. You see that with lab support. And the testing center is quite significant. We unfortunately, till now, have had students with accommodations having to go into awkward spaces, to put it politely, for assessments. That's not Hastings. So we are going to be fixing that. That also does relate to the bond in some of the critical additional spaces we need. And you see a sense of the ongoing commitment here for what we value. Then we have a final slide here. Our extracurriculars are far more than simply this one page. But again, this is a summative piece trying to give the headlines on certain areas. So we give headlines on athletics and also then on theater and music and art. But this is brief compared to the really robust offerings and opportunities that we have for our students. So in one tight place, those are the numbers for this budget. Those are the narratives for this budget. And let me end with one very big, important point. This budget has to pass. This budget has to pass. I cannot ask voters to vote yes or no, to vote, vote your conscience. But no, that if this budget does not pass, we are in a very, very difficult place.
Can you explain that?
Well, we know that several years ago, when the budget did not pass, when we went back to vote, it passed by a very wide margin. But when it did not pass, to then get it over the hurdle of the second vote, we had to cut about a half million out. That was immediate reductions for that next year, but then that has a multiplying effect. So right now, we're probably short the equivalent of about 2 million that we would have had if that budget had passed.
Because the budget didn't pass three years ago.
Yeah. And now most immediately, though, if this budget doesn't pass, we will be looking at staff reductions. The kinds of things you struggled with so much over the last several months and great commentary from families and others very concerned, we will be right back at that and we will have no choice but to make those very, very difficult decisions. Having been grim for the last two minutes, I want to be optimistic. I think the hard work that you all as a board did with the administration on this budget, listening and listening and then responding and acting, keeping it as an efficient budget for our taxpayers and then providing all of what we're able to provide, I think this budget is one that should pass quite strongly. But I don't want to leave anything to doubt, so we keep pushing the communications again. Please vote, vote your conscience. That's the budget right now. You may have questions, thoughts, comments before we shift gears to the bond.
Yeah, let's open it up for any questions or comments or things that people want to note.
I'll say something. I mean, I, this has been a long year in terms of both the budget and the bond. And it's been, and I've been, having been through many of these, I think that I'm impressed with the way that everybody could work together, how the board was able to work together, but also the superintendent and administrators. Because it was a real work in progress, it was a listening process and many changes were made. And I think we're fortunate that we're able to put this budget up for a vote under the tax cap. But I feel like I wasn't on the board when the last budget didn't pass, but I've heard a lot about the repercussions. And I think it's really important that people understand. It's not to say, I mean, if people are opposed, they have to vote no. As Bill said, you have to vote your conscience. But there's something very powerful implications, repercussions when a budget doesn't pass. It has, as you said, it's not just that it doesn't pass and you have to go have another vote. There are then, I don't know, I'm not sure that people understand the whole process, but it plays out over many years after that.
Yeah, can I dovetail on that? So to your point, when a budget goes down, you have one more bite at the apple, so to speak, before statutorily, you have to have a zero increase, which is a decrease, obviously, in relation to costs. So when a budget goes down, a district would almost be foolhardy to just put it back up. They always try to cut some things, right? Oh, I know. They always try to cut some things to make it more likely to pass. Three years ago, that budget went down. And speaking of my own opinion, there was nothing controversial in that budget. What was noteworthy, though, is that was the first year the debt from the 2014, 2018 bond was coming online. And because of that debt service, the budget went up. And debt service is flat. You know, it's amortized over the length of the bond. But it's that first year, especially, you feel it because it hops up. And so that budget failed. The district made about, as Dr. McCursie said, about $550,000, $600,000 in cuts. And because next year's budget, it's again, statutorily based upon the current year's budget, when you step down, you've changed the trajectory of your budget. And cumulatively, what Dr. McCursie was saying, we're about $2 million lower in our spending capability than we would have been had that budget passed. So that's always a stake with any budget. Particularly this time, you know, I think the community needs to recognize as well that we are in a part of our cycle where we're renewing contracts with literally every bargaining unit in this building. That is the-
In the district, not the building.
Sorry, not right. The district. That is the teachers' union, that is the service employees' union, that is the administrators' union. All of the contracts that we hope to have with those people, those costs are built into this budget. If this budget goes down, those contracts, I mean, you can put a point on it, but those contracts are all at risk. We cannot fund those obligations. I don't know what we do then, but it's a very, very serious endeavor. It's a very serious obligation for the community to think about repercussions that happen from that. One other point I'd make, you know, when we talk about, and what you showed here, new things that we're doing, and you mentioned it, new things always come from old things. We don't spend a lot of new money. We repurpose, we reallocate, we move away from certain things we've done in the past and we do new things. There are $1.3 million of savings, reallocations that make the quote-unquote "new things" in this budget possible. And that's because the process here is essentially a zero-based budget. This is built from the ground up, from the chairs of the departments. It's not an administrative budget where the super comes in and say, what did we spend last year? Add 3% on top and roll it over. It is built brick by brick. And I think especially this year, how many iterations we had, how much input we took, how much we listened to it. We really see that it is, in fact, built, it's a handmade budget. And so stakes are always high, but I'm particularly proud that this budget was able to come in under the tax cap and hitting all its marks for what the community has asked us to do within the schools. So thank you all, and Maureen's not here, but thank all of you for the hard work and also the community for the input, which helps us get to a place where we meet their expectations, so.
Yeah, and that's just continuing what both of you were saying. I feel particularly grateful to the process, for all the stakeholders that were involved, from our school leaders, to our teachers, to our board members, and to the community that came in and shared their feelings and thoughts and gave us data and were able to all talk about it, think about it, check on the data. And then I think we all made changes and adjusted, and that's a process. And that is the process. And I think we did a really good job about following the process. And as a result, it's really wonderful to see the PTSA and the Hastings Education Foundation and all these other community members in town coming together and rallying for the schools to push to support the budget and the bond. That's a beautiful thing you don't always see. And it's really unanimous support from those members of our community. And I think that's wonderful because we really want to support our kids in the future.
Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the second part of a similar presentation, which is an update on the bond.
And you're okay waiting for your comment after this? Okay.
Can I come, Alex, you can stand up there and do that? I can still click away, right?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I just find it easier to look at the screen here than across everything, all the rest. There's also a famous movie, Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid. Quick, give me the line that I'm acting out here, the fact I'm better when I move. Quick, what's the reference?
Yeah, it's Redford, right? When he's-
Yeah, when he first meets, sorry, you know, issues with guns nowadays, you want to sort of be light on this, but it is a great film. So he can't hit anything, Redford. That's obviously the actor, not the part. And then he says to Newman, "Well, I'm better when I move." And then he can't miss a thing. So I'm better when I move. So I want to take a little time for you as a board, and this is now in the public record for those here and others, in terms of the bond. Because we've been doing a lot of work to clarify it, understand and explain it. And I really want to thank all of you on the board and especially the board president for really leaning in with great critiques, analysis, and specific work. Again, there's the icon. We find it's helpful to point to something specific to remind people. We now have a set of testimonials that are showing up on social media with images and quotes. We thought it was fitting to lead with Maureen's quote, by the way she's in another part of the country, celebrating her daughter's graduation from college. We'll leave all those secrets, but it's a very important time for Maureen. So I said, please, that's where you need to be this week. But that quote really speaks a lot. And the image of what the strength of this grand old building has been is shown here. You approved, board, a three-part bond referendum. Here it is explained exactly as you had approved it with the dollar totals in each, with the kind of detail that's needed. And we'll get in a second to clarifying the way the vote works. We put out a communication today because there's been some confusion. And I will own the confusion and I hope now I can help own the clarity and the cleaning up of that. But bond proposition one is the district-wide infrastructure improvements. As I like to say, that's the guts of our buildings, particularly the Farragut complex, that so badly needs attention. Number two is about instructional space and accessibility. This is just as important as the first, as we will work hard to help residents see. That as great as this school system's been, as wonderful it's been for generations, this building, the Farragut complex, we need to catch up. In a sense, we need the facility to catch up with our students, catch up with our families in the quality of instructional spaces. And there's nothing in here nice to have, as we're going to keep saying, it's all that we need to have. Prop three is the athletic and recreational fields, facilities. We're in there specific about recommending two synthetic turf fields. We'll come back to a little more detail on that because there is a work group, an internal work group, that met last week. Alex, I think when we get a little later, we can explain what's happening there. We then found why we need to explain better. So this is new information. It's what went out in a communication today. I want to thank Melissa D. Laber for being so good, wanting to putting things together in clarity about how to communicate. So working with Cara Tomero came up with what we think is explaining why we've structured it the way, what's most essential in each of the propositions. So you see what's there. And at the end, we give an explanation as to, we feel all three deserve serious consideration. We vote your conscience, but we all badly need these, aren't wants, these are deep, deep needs. But we listened. We understood that there seems to be most resonance around that first proposition. So that's why it's there. Maybe second most around proposition two, I hope it's a dead heat tie for how important that is. And I, you know, think the athletic one is just as important. We understand their questions and concerns. So we structured it to allow residents to vote in, across all three areas. All votes will be counted. That may seem obvious. But in some communication earlier, it was not explained as clear as it could and the local newspaper picked up on that and we're going to have to fix that. There was some understanding that if I vote yes on one, that means I get to vote on the others. If I vote no on one, I don't get to vote on the others. No, 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 no. And we apologize, I do. You vote on all three, all votes are counted, yes and no, yes and no. However, prop one, that has to pass for prop two to have life. Prop two has to pass for prop three to have life. We will still show all of the votes. Your vote, yes or no, on prop one counts as it does all the way through.
Why is that, that prop one has to vote, yes has to win in order for, can you explain that?
It's, so in the previous slide, which is why the vote is structured this way, you know, the prop one is the essential, the building critical systems. Things that, you know, if we don't tackle, the buildings may not work properly. So they're mission critical. So that is, you know, the stuff that simply has to pass or simply has to be first. It has to be, you know, until those are taken care of, we would not be able to consider doing anything that's even slightly discretionary because these are, you know, in some ways, I wouldn't say they're required by New York State law, but we are required to upkeep our buildings. And because of that, these fall in a special category and so they come first. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and still very-
They come out of the building condition survey as well, that first section. So that's something that we are mandated as a district to do, to just essentially have an essential understanding of what the health of our infrastructure is. And having conducted that comprehensive assessment of what are the status of our buildings is, prop one is absolutely what they said, red flag signaling, these must happen.
Right.
Just for our, for those, just the most bare bones, that has to happen. So that's why that's considered the fundamental, if nothing else were to happen, those have to happen. But in order for our, you know, buildings to be functional, to actually provide services for our students in a way that's lacking right now, it's been more fleshed out in proposition two because we understand we have these space limitations. We understand that we've had, you know, classrooms over the course of the summer that suffered deterioration and there were collapses in the building. And we understand that there were stairways that collapsed more recently. And that's even included in one of our business items that have to be attended to. We know that the cafeteria that we currently have is not servicing our students and doesn't offer the adequacy of space. So we need to have more classrooms to accommodate the needs of our students, whether we're talking about the needs of our students who require special services or more importantly, that we just need to have students have a footprint that's adequate for them, given that we have a roughly similar number of students in the middle school and the high school, and yet we have a 40% less footprint in the middle school. That's not something that we can sustain or that I think that as trustees, we feel we are living up to our fiduciary responsibilities. So that's kind of just me spitballing.
Yeah. All votes count. So, you know, vote for every single one of the three, the yes, no's, we keep track of that. It is building in, though, in a sense, an incentive to say, if you really care about three, please think hard because you got to care about one and two. So all votes will count, we'll see all that. But that's why there's that kind of layering of one has to pass to allow you to have them two, three. But all the votes are taken, they're counted. two or three, if I voted yes on one. That is not, not the case. That, so, we're trying to clarify that. So, that's why you're stressing right now that every vote will be counted. Now, here's what's brand new tonight, and the staff, because I believe, and I think the board agrees with me on this, staff first, board in other seconds. So, these may be now floating out and around, but these are the renderings for what's being proposed. And I think these show that if a picture's worth a thousand words, let me play with that, these are worth five, 10, 15,000 words. And again, this is the first time they're in the public realm. But again, the staff saw these yesterday. This is what the new entrance way would look like. There have been other versions of this, but this is the, from PBDW, this is the design. And obviously, as you roll into construction, things might look a little bit different, but hopefully you see here where the design is honoring the look of this existing building. It's creating this vital, we need accessibility. This is not an accessible building. Students on crutches who may be temporarily on that, they can't get into our building and get around it without incredible inconvenience. This is designed first and foremost to provide a single, accessible and safe and secure entrance, redesigned based on lots of public comment, to be appropriately modest, but give us this entrance way we need. I think right there is a great example that we have listened. If I were to put to the left the original beautiful creative concepts from PBDW, this is scaled down to a level of modesty that is fitting with what we're hearing from what people in Hastings care about. But the functionality of this, we have to recognize. You've got to have a building that's accessible, and there's a safe, secure, common entrance. That's what this does.
Can I pause there just to add a couple of other points I think are important to recognize with the entryway? So, number one, you brought up, the Farragut complex lacks an ADA compliant entryway. We have, this is not a theoretical thing, we have students who live in this community, and part of the reason they don't attend this school is because of the access issues. Why do we, people have been asked, well, why does, if it's required by state law, why do we have it? And obviously, the answer is that these things get grandfathered in, which is why we don't have it. The other thing that's brought up is somehow presented as though a vestibule is something fancy, something like that. For a secure entrance, as part of the design, we need the so-called man trap. It needs to be a vestibule entrance. It can't just be a ramp that goes into a doorway. It needs a secure area in front of the school. I'd also point out that there are two large trees there, the people have concerns about taking down. When we had the landscape architects look at that, they assessed those trees to be between 80 and 100 years old, nearing the end of their life. Part of it's represented on the previous drawing is the planting of new trees that are going to be there for the next 80, 100 years, and that, you know, the way the plaza is now is going to be, you know, even better, and it's going to be something that's durable for the generations to come here. The last thing I'd point out is that you break down the costs of the different aspects of construction, the entryway for, you know, a typical $1 million home in Hastings would be about $1.50 a month. I just want to point out the scale and scope of this. Seems to be a lot of, a lot of bang for the buck, or the buck 150, I should say. Thanks.
Alex, can you just stay with that for a minute?
Sure.
Because I know where there were some questions raised about if we need an accessible entrance, what about that ramp that's like to the left between the old middle school entrance and this new proposed entrance? Like, behind that tree on the left, you know, there's like a little ramp that goes up and comes in. Why can't that be the accessible entrance?
Part of the answer is that these are five buildings built across 25 years, from 1902 to 1931. They're all different levels. There's no way, you know, to go into this center building and have arms that reach across to the other sides. It connects. Right now, someone, if somebody has to go, if someone needs access to the other side of the building, they have to exit, walk around, or get around the building and enter from the other side. And part of the concern has been, you know, people can't make it fast enough between classes or in transit times. Are there certain parts of the building that are just not accessible? So, having it be centrally located accesses all the pieces of the building from one location. That's why.
And in this day and age, it's a great question, Jody, because in this day and age, we have to worry about safety and security. And that would immediately create a staffing issue, because you would have to staff that side entrance, and that creates weakness in us ensuring the security and safety of our building. Right now, we're working and living through that as the FMS wing is down and not functional, and we are trying to direct as many people through now the high school entrance, but it's a safety and security issue. And this next, you get a little more of a close-up of what, this is what schools nowadays need to have. You need to have that entrance way that has degree of control, and you can see there's that initial layer of doors. You would come in, and that's the area where you're met, so to speak. I'm trying to find a nice word. That's security there. And it also allows us to, at the beginning and end of the day, manage the flow in and out. Now, some would say, "Can you get 1,000 students flowing in and out?" This, yes. With that kind of space, and we can make that work in the space, space around the building. We know from other schools of this size that you can do that. This is now the first look from the outside of what the cafeteria would be, the new cafeteria. And there are going to be a few other renditions here that show, first off, for those who value the courtyard when we can use it, you can see that we're holding on to that courtyard in the best ways possible. Right now, you begin just looking through that glass, and I'm going to repeat this point a lot. There's incredible efficiency in this design. We are using, for half of that construction, we're using existing walls. For half of that construction, we're using existing walls, which requires us to use the glazing, which actually is no more expensive than if we were to put a brick or other pieces up there. On that other side, as we'll see shortly, those are classrooms and spaces that need to be used. You need the light that's going to be coming in through half of this, which is glass, and there is light coming in from above. But we should be applauded for finding a way to hold on to the best of a courtyard, use half as much construction space by using two existing walls, and finding a kind of tucking this into a corner, if you will, but still with the space required for what will be, I think, very good for our students, fit the requirements of the cafeteria size, and also become quite a wonderful space for the village. Why can't that be a space for events and programs such as we're now enjoying in this space? Think about here in the multipurpose room, the importance of having this as a glass wall as opposed to blocked out. It's of a similar idea here. That's the inside look. And there you immediately see, I probably should have gone here faster. People say, "Why two stories?" Well, you see why it's two stories, because you need access into the cafeteria from the functional student spaces. That's what those stairs are doing. They're bringing students in from that upper floor and also the second floor. If you don't do that, you continue to have massive flow problems in and out of the cafeteria space. Right now, I'm amazed that we don't have more injuries, I'm not joking, I'm dead serious, more injuries getting in and out of our cafeteria, particularly for our rambunctious, highly energetic, wonderful middle schoolers, at the point of coming in and going out, that this is an attempt to provide more access points. So, it's not a two-story cafeteria. It is a one-story cafeteria allowing access to two stories of the building. And here, we reinforce, no pun intended, this idea of why the glazing makes complete sense for maximizing the functionality of the rest of the space.
Can I point out, you know, so, again, to your point, it's glass, it faces north?
Yes.
It's glass because it needs to light in. There are about 36 windows that are being enclosed by the cafeteria. They used to be exterior windows into classrooms and student spaces. So, it's needed for the light to pass through. I also want to point out that the fundamental issue that the cafeteria is addressing, our current cafeteria, per New York State standards, is 50% smaller than it would be to serve the school population than New York State would recommend. It's a very small cafeteria. And that's not just, again, not just a theoretical thing, we hear, we've heard for a long time, and I remember with my own kids, that it's chaotic in there. Families complain their children do not even get to get lunch, because of how chaotic the service is there. The other thing that we should mention is that even if the cafeteria were to stay where it was, a lot of the equipment has aged out of its useful life. We would be spending several hundred thousand dollars to replace the equipment that's there. So, you know, there's a, there is a problem just with the cafeteria and serving the school population. There is a cost that we're trying to get to with this. It's in the other side of it, which we'll get to in a moment, is what do we gain when we move the cafeteria from its current location?
And when we get to Cai and Ella, they may be willing to give some comments, though it's not as much for you as high schoolers. People know I like to eat, so I'm in the cafeteria a lot.
That's true.
So, I have a lot of personal data. But this isn't the exact final design to the ripe of the serving area, but you begin to see how much more functional that is than literally two tight doorways that you throw people into this small kind of U-shaped space, which really is just a challenge. There's another view of sort of how this looks. You see the serving area off to the left, and this is now functionally the right size for a school of some 1,100 students. You again see the advantages of the glazing, again, same cost, but this is, I argue this is modest, and correct is what we need in terms of providing the space. This is what we gain.
Doesn't the cafeteria face east?
This one would face north. It's like north, it's northwest, but it's predominantly north.
Okay. Directionally challenged.
The river, so the sun sets over the river, right?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
And it's, but the school's oriented like this. Think about where the river is.
Got it. I got you.
So, the reason to move the cafeterias for this, so you almost would lead with this, but this is where the current cafeteria, this is what we'll create.
This is where the current cafeteria is.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we will create five large classrooms, two code. Right now, as you notice, nearly all of our middle school classrooms are subcode in size. These are five new, plus some additional smaller instructional space. Right now, you see we would have an art room where you see, where you see it marked, and these, at this point, we're thinking, we see an image in a second, these may be substantially for middle school science, to really try and upgrade what's happening there, and the current science spaces would be re-engineered for other classrooms. But we gain, right there, six instructs, seven instructional spaces, not just one. We gain, and this fits with the whole flow of the building, to put this instructional space right near where other instructional spaces are.
Okay. Can I also point out that one of the, you know, to your point about why you create new science classrooms, the existing science classrooms are some of the only rooms we have that are actually above code, because they were built to accommodate the larger desks. So, when we go to turn those into other rooms, they are, they can be larger rooms because of that virtue that they already have, so.
Yeah. And while we're here, I can emphasize, and maybe Melissa, you can jump in in a second, Melissa's great with cold calls. I do not warn her about any of these questions I'm asking her tonight. But we have to value all of the diverse learning that's in our district. So, whether you're, you know, a general ed student, or a special ed, or with a 504, we've got to honor that. So, you need some different instructional spaces. That small group instructional space may become critical for some resource room type of work, or other more focused work that may go on. And Melissa, if you want to add to that at this point.
Also, I know we've been talking over time about testing and making sure we have spaces for testing accommodations. So, if there is an instance where students need a separate space, and I am saying need, you know, often these things are on the IEP, they have to be able to go somewhere. So, to maximize that and to be able to do that simultaneously for small groups, having dedicated spaces for this allows us to still maintain the fidelity of the master schedule with the larger classrooms being used by larger numbers of students. So, it gives us some flexibility, and it concurrently ensures that we're meeting student needs.
This is a view of one of the redone classrooms. You can see this one's outfitted, you know, for science purposes. You get a sense of the importance of the light and all the rest.
And I just want to say, when it says "proposed Washington wing," that just means the current cafeteria.
Yes.
So, that people aren't misinterpreting in the public that it's like another wing that we're building out. Because I think that there has been some, some talk about that, when it says "proposed Washington wing." No, that means currently existing, currently occupied cafeteria that will be repurposed to have those educational spaces.
Yeah. And...
That's good, Sylvia, because I think there are people who would think we're doing an addition.
Like repurposed?
Yeah, we can...
Repurposed cafeteria.
Yeah. We'll draw a note that it'd be easy for us to make that, ask PBDW to change the wording there to make that clear.
Yes.
Okay. This is a view, if you come back here, if you, the lower-left corner, that small group instructional space, that's what you're seeing here with the alcoves for lockers, which we already have issues with locker alcoves being tucked away. This, we still have flow, we have monitoring. This opens it up in important ways. Lot of words here. This is a reminder of why, this is about instructional space. Moving the cafeteria is to create instructional opportunities, and yes, address a cafeteria that is indeed subpar, but there's a lot of tight language there about why we need to make this change, and how it relates into even the front of the building. Now, let's go to the athletic side of the discussion. This is the upper burke field. This is rendition of a synthetic turf field. This would be multipurpose. We would still be using Reynolds largely for football. This would be used for all other sports. You can see it's lined for that, but it'd be a multipurpose field. And let me go to the next slide, Alex. Maybe we tuck in here where we are with that work group. We also then committed UR as a board to a synthetic turf softball field. You can get a sense of a bird's eye view here. This is in the current practice field area. If you were to draw back kind of towards the lower end, would be where the existing baseball field is. That far field is natural. The baseball field remained natural. This would be an artificial turf field, and that Hastings thing you see to the left, excuse me, that's this. So, if you get an orientation as to where we are with these images. Do you want to just, we can quickly talk about where we are in terms of the work group and sorting out synthetic turf options.
Right. So, you know, as I've already pretty showing, we're looking at two synthetic turf surfaces. And one of the questions that's ongoing is, well, what does that mean? What is the actual product? Because there are lots of different products. And in particular, I think we all know, there are some bleeding-edge, cutting-edge products that are coming out that have corrected a lot of the deficiencies or concerns of existing products. And so, this committee, small one, is looking very quickly at some of those really modern ones that, should I specify a little bit of what their virtues are?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's okay. So, the real headline is that one, a product that we're looking at or products we're seeking are ones that don't have any infill. There's no, you know, most of the plastic that's in a field is the infill, and most of the plastic that has a chance to move is the infill. These are zero infill fields that have cushioning built in underneath them that's, you know, a fundamental integral part of the field itself. The second thing is because they don't have any infill, infill's used for cushioning, because you don't need infill if there's any concerns going forward about a very hot surface, you can use that infill capability to put in infill that ameliorates heat. And there's one in particular that's just calcium carbonate, it's just chalk. And there would be an opportunity, if heat proved to be an issue or a concern, that we could, with this type of field, we could ameliorate that very simply. All the fields we're looking at, as per New York State law, do not contain any PFAS plastics. And we're also, as part of, I think if you guys have looked at the proposition, we're looking for fields that are fully recyclable, which seems to be the modern, some of the modern fields are. So, that's kind of the highlights of what we don't, we haven't settled on any particular one, and that's not how the process works. We design sort of what our parameters are, and then we put it out as a bid to the different manufacturers to come to us and say, "Yes, our product fits what your parameters are, and here are the costs." And so, that's kind of the, that's what this little committee is kind of accelerating. and then we put it out as a bid to the different manufacturers to come to us and say, yes, our product fits what your parameters are, and here are the costs. And so that's kind of the, that's, that's what this little committee is kind of accelerating us towards. Is that fair to say?
Yeah. And from the board, Alex and Kristen, well, my brain, Teresa are on that one. Teresa's on that. And then athletic director, Maureen, me, Drew as athletic director, me. It's internal purposely, and also the LA group advisor, Bob Kiernan. We need to do this so we stand 100% chance of any reimbursement from the state. So there are very strict procurement regulations, bidding regulations. So what we have to do now, as opposed to chasing a specific product, is to set up a set of specs, our priorities for specs. And we're meeting tomorrow again. We're hoping by the 20th to come forward with, to you as a board, here's the list of specs that are, will be our priority if the bond Prop 3 passes. These are the specs that will guide us in the competitive bidding process. And typically, even from, if June 17th, if it vote, if the vote is positive, Prop 3 passes, we still looking at several, easily have worked, just to figure out what that product would be. It might be even longer than that. But right now, we can set the specs and help voters understand what those priorities are in the specs. We cannot go pre-pick a product or we undermine the public bidding requirements and put at risk any reimbursement.
So just to be clear, we will be able, by the time of the bond vote, to be clear with people what the synthetic turf field would be?
Not the specific product. We can, we'll be absolutely crystal clear about the parameters we've laid down. The product must meet these parameters. And we're voting on those parameters, basically.
Okay. And then some of the products that you're looking, considering, they are... There are a variety of possibilities, so we can, able to put up an RFP in order to do it, which we couldn't do with other alternatives. Is that correct?
Right. But we're also not engaging in direct, specific conversation with any firm, vendor, as opposed to just to generally understand.
Okay.
You know, if these are the, you know, what specs are there? But that's also helpful where, you know, through competitive RFP, we have contracted with LA Group, who works on this with hundreds upon hundreds of educational entities. So they're helping us, guiding us through those specs and making sure, and Maureen Carrell is excellent on this, making sure we stay within those regulations for the procurement process. But put very simply, we cannot say X product is the one. We can say, here are the criteria, the specs we're looking for, then go into the process. We understand that by looking around a bit.
I think that people will want to know, or at least know from the board, that we're committed to, if we do, if people are struggling about whether to vote for synthetic turf or not, and they have problems with some previous variations, I think they'll want to know pretty clearly what we're...
Yes.
Looking at. And then the cost also won't be a problem, given the money that we've put into the bond, right?
Correct. Correct. Now, Alex, what we've inserted now for the next several slides are points that a few of you had put together in your outreach. So I don't know if you want to then highlight some of these. There, again, this is an attempt to get this on the public record. I found these as five very kind of compelling summative points. I'll follow your lead as went to move through the deck at this point.
Well, if anybody wants to contribute to any of these things, I mean, we've talked about all of these. I think really the headline one for me is just this realization that the middle school, serving the same number of students, is 40% less space than the high school. Middle school is vastly smaller than this school, meeting Hillside. And I, you know, again, we don't go into all the detail, but we're living with a legacy of decisions that were made in the early 90s, when this town was struggling in many ways, and the school was struggling, the school was only just above 1,000 students. And they had space. And so when the Burke House, the Burke Estate was condemned, they took all those offices, which is about 3,000 square feet, and moved them into the middle school. And the cafeteria, they couldn't run it, I suppose anymore, they couldn't do food service. The original cafeteria was in the current library in the high school. And as part of some sort of downsizing, that cafeteria was closed. It was turned into a library. Cafeteria was sent to the basement of the Farragut complex, a small room where it was just, a room that children could eat in. And at some point, when the school started to get a little larger, they took over the classrooms that used to be in the Washington wing and made that the current cafeteria. So that's why we're reclaiming, you know, that's one of the reasons we want to reclaim this space. It used to be classrooms. It's laid out perfectly where the windows are, everything, to be classrooms. So that's sort of like the biggest headline of what we're trying to solve with the biggest aspects of this bond. I think we can, you know, move on to, I mean, this is a line that we've sort of been talking about. And we should flesh this out as, as we go towards the bond. The FMS has become hard to teach in. It's become hard to learn in, and it's become hard to lead. You know, I feel a lot of us had kids that went through that school, and particularly coming out of Hillside, it's a real step into a very different environment, a very crowded environment. It's a step into an environment where, you know, here you have all these adults that you connect with. You have sort of quiet spaces. It's chaotic. It's, it's a very tough transition. And I think what a lot of us as board members have seen, you know, we track data. And Melissa knows this, we sort of, we have the STAR assessments, we have the, I forget what the name, the Panorama Survey, which tracks students' sort of attachment to the schools, or how comfortable they feel. And we've remarked on it a number of times, that you have this sort of graph that Hillsiders are doing great, and then there's this dip, this sag into the middle school. And we see it academically, we see it socially. It's not quantitative, but qualitatively, some of the things we list here. We hear about it for years, parent concerns. We see it with behavioral issues that crop up in the, in the school. We hear about it from teachers in the high school, saying, you know, things that they, that the children are arriving to them from the middle school not well-equipped for the demands of high school. And we also see it with, what all of us have seen over the years, with the revolving door of leadership and a range of positions. And, you know, at some point, I think it all dawns on us, we put this together, that it's, you know, it's an aspect, it's not that the building solves all of these things, but a building, the building is part of the problem for each of these things. And that's, that's a realization. And that's, that's for me personally, on the board, the view I've had into this for four years, it's a truism. So that statement, I think, is, for me, what we're really trying to solve. And I think we'd also, we also know that, I've heard this argument, that, you know, this person came out of the middle school and did great, you know, but for every student who finds a way to succeed, or for every student that comes from a family that has the resources to paper over the deficiencies, there are dozens who don't. And that's, that's something you can't see. It's not, you know, we can't prove it, but it, you know, I think it bothers each of us as board members. So this is a very real thing. And I think that to the extent that we can before the bond vote, we should flesh this out a little bit with what data we have, or what other sort of qualitative things we can bring in, because it's a, it's a powerful point. And then, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead to why we need to act now. Can we go to that?
Yes.
Okay. This also doesn't get said enough. The New York State currently reimburses 40% of our project costs. As you touched on, entirety of this bond has been carefully constructed to be reimbursable by New York State, which is essentially dollar matching our inputs. That rate that we currently enjoy is significantly higher than similar communities around us. And as we've mentioned before, our expectation is that New York State is going to, at some point, reasonably soon, lower that reimbursement rate. That is the outlook for us. And all of these projects would cost millions of dollars more just, you know, without the state contribution. And to the extent that we see these things as critical, they would, you know, they would almost move into the realm of not being able to get done, so expensive that we cannot do them. And so this is really an opportunity for a district that is severely underutilized capital, capital projects. It's not listed, oh, it is listed here. I'll jump down to that in a second. This is a real opportunity. And I don't want to say last bite at the apple for us, but we would be raising sort of the risk profile of how much we could get done if we just kick the can into the future. This is something that we have, that weighs on us, you know, that it gives us the ability to do it now. Do you want to pick up on the, or shall I just go?
I mean, I would, I mean, no, I think that these, what I, what I found quite powerful of these several sizes, is just really the board leaning in to say, these are the things that matter most, and bringing some real clarity from lots and lots of material, bringing it down to these three slides, and then particularly why now. So I, Alex, I won't repeat what you said. One thing I will is enrollment. We are part of the regionalization effort that's coming out of NICE Ed. And not all the districts have ponied up on that. We have. We trust that process not to lock us into a merger or something, but how can we learn? We've already learned that in the shared data, for, and Alex has some of this, we, we're one of the few districts that has some growth. You know, it's 0.3%, but many around us are dropping by eight, nine percentage points. We're not. We're, we're in a stable, if growing, place. Statewide, data's down, excuse me, enrollment's down. Federally, nationally, it's down. But we, we are not. And, and my concern is if we don't, it goes back to my opening, we want to have our facilities match the opportunity and hope of our students. You know, at some point, families are going to say, these facilities are not what they should be. And I have choices. And, and we have to be very smart and real about that.
Can I, can I add to that also? You're right. I mean, we are one of the few communities that's growing. The village itself, through the comprehensive plan that just came out, wants to grow, wants to increase density, wants to increase the number of people that live here. So our expectation for what the population growth in the school is, that there would be a modest increase over time. But also, I want to, the other side of that argument, and I wonder, there are people who feel like, well, you know, the school gets smaller, the expenses go down, but that's not actually how it works at all. There is sort of a critical level of viability. When a school gets beneath that, when a school system is beneath, let's say, 1,200 students, or, you know, it gets hard to fund the basics of what a school requires. And not only that, you know, one of the other ways New York State's trying to change school financing is to, if enrollment drops in a school, New York State can lower the amount of foundation aid that that school receives. Currently, through current policy of save harmless, it's essentially held flat. So you can have enrollment that starts to drop, New York State is kind of, just they'll keep you where you were. They're not going to increase it, but they're going to keep you where you are. But going forward, if your enrollment starts to drop, you, you will get less state aid. And so the burden, you know, paradoxically, you can have a school with declining enrollment where costs actually increase on the population of the town. At the same time, that because you have a school in crisis or in trouble, potentially the home values are dropping at the same time. So there's sort of like a trap that gets set up. And, you know, it's almost incumbent upon us to find ways, well, it is incumbent upon us, to find the ways to keep the school district healthy. And to at least maintain the possibility for growth is one of those ways we keep it healthy. And that's also what we're trying to do here as well.
So what we've done in the closing part of this is to put into one place in the public record, the testimonials that we've been gathering that are now out on social media. And they're from the board, students and faculty. Obviously, you want to lead with your board president, so there's a testimonial with visuals that matter. That, that photo of a space up on Burke, that's the field hockey kind of field. That will remain natural turf. And the point is, if we can have a couple of artificial turf, it allows us to focus that much more on the upkeep of our natural turf. So of our seven fields, five will remain natural. And that will give us a leg up on helping those be quality. Central here is the leadership at the middle school. Both Scott Winn and Dan Waldick, you know, very exciting assistant principal. And I'm now going to embarrass him. We just went through testing, and I had outreach unprompted from several middle school teachers saying it's the best organized assessment they've had in the middle school ever. One of those teachers has been there 25 years, which actually predates most of the state assessments. But I saw Dan yesterday, and I told him I might embarrass him here in this meeting in public. But, but that is big, because we have struggled with that recently. But we did not struggle. But there's a very important there. I love that phrase, the instructional home for our adolescents here in Hastings. Adolescence is a wonderfully complicated time. You want to provide that growth period the most opportunity you can. And we are shoehorning our adolescents into incredibly tight space, which creates all kinds of issues. And the image there helps. That's a classroom. By the way, I took that photo. Here's Melissa Shandrov. She said, yeah, let me be a spokesperson for this. One of our real rock star teachers, department chairs, and leader of the science research program. And purposely, that's a middle school science room. That would be repurposed for what we would hope to have up in what would have been the cafeteria. Our students have been amazing. You know, Kai and Ella are fabulous. We've had a number come to the mic. I think they've been about the best to get to the mic. I learn from them every time they go to the mic. Bobby Gentman here is with a photo of the field. That will remain a natural field. That's our baseball field. But again, that emphasis of resource, with two major fields, artificial turf easier to care for, we can lean that much more in. Now, one of the parents, when I was up at a game last week, said, well, what's going to happen with our dugouts? That have as many bees as they have balls flying around them. All of this would be redone. We would, we'd leave the natural turf, we'll upgrade it, but there'll be all new dugouts, new fencing. So that is in the bond proposal that the board has approved. But Bobby's quote there is quite telling. Joe Vaccaro, longtime teacher, who's also coach, said, I, I want to be a spokesperson. And here we chose to have him speaking from the point of athletics, and in a pretty accurate image of as best we can do what our natural turf fields look like. But again, Joe's comments speak for themselves. But he, he really asked, he came to us and said, I want to be a spokesperson. Siri's been off the charts, softball player extraordinary, great student. This is right outside the door here. A nice, a nice image of what, how fun that field is, but you can see right there, that is a tough field to play on. And I think it's a big win for our scholar athletes who play softball. And then that field can be used for other things. And we will keep this field, we will update this field. But having a natural, excuse me, artificial turf softball field, which will get used for other sports, is really important. The superintendent, I end here, about a grand old facility. It's just this attempt for us to be really forward-looking for what our future is. So these are some testimonials that are out there. We'll keep updating those on the website. But we've now, I think, in one place, we'll update this, we'll fix some of the renderings to make sure they know that's not a whole new third wing, but is the redo of the cafeteria. But I found this, and Melissa, thank you so much for putting this together, updating it. She did amazing work taking this, even in the last few days, forward from what was for our PTA. But this is exciting to me, and we're going to keep taking excerpts of this to share.
Yeah. Can I also just point out with regards to the fields, you mentioned two of seven. There are, and we talked about this at the last board meeting, there are a lot of districts that have embraced turf simply because of the cost advantage in servicing the fields. And they're, you know, they would turf, they turf the entirety of their field. That has never been even on the table here. You know, we've looked at the usage that's been lost for these fields, for the teams, practices canceled, games canceled. And two of seven is strategic. You know, we've met with their athletic director, we've talked about, we've looked at sort of the multiplex scheduling of things. And those two fields give us, they unlock the schedule, and let us work around the weather. And that, that's, that's what we're trying to do here. I want, I want people to understand that we're not on our way to getting rid of all the grass fields, you know. And I think the other point which you brought up before as well, Hastings doesn't have many municipal facilities. We're not like a lot of the other towns that have fields that belong to the town. So we do that duty. We, you know, for the little leagues, for the auxiliary sports teams, they use our fields. And so it's not just for the best athletes, it's not just for our athletes. It is really a, a town asset, a village asset, that we're trying to make more functional so that everybody can use it around the village. Any, any questions? Are there points that trustees want to dig in on? No?
Yeah, can we go back to the slide with the new cafeteria vantage point? It's in color, I believe.
Number 10?
Two more. There you go. Yeah. So I think this perspective of the cafeteria is a new one that we haven't seen. It was kind of from another angle, where you didn't see the exterior. Which wing is this on the right? I don't want to say the wrong...
That's Washington.
That's Washington, right. We would see it with the other wing in the background. And it made it, it made it look like it was an extension and not a, not a...
Ah, not closing it.
A adjoining piece, right? Or converging, or I don't know if I'm... Conjoining piece, right? Or converging, or I don't know if I'm using the right word.
Enclosing, yeah.
Enclosing a space, right? And from this angle, it really does show a perspective that is economically advantageous, right? And I think that that's, this perspective now diminishes the argument that this cafeteria is ostentatious, because we're looking at it from, we're just taking two existing walls and we're just conjoining them with a curvature, right? So I think that this particular image changes a lot of perspective of what this room looks like. And can we just go to the next image? One more. This student perspective of being in this room and looking out and seeing light, I think there's been a lot of conversation about this being glass, and why are we wanting dark spaces for our children, especially in a cafeteria? This is a room that is so welcoming that I can't imagine looking at this picture and saying, oh, this really should be a brick wall.
Why would we want glass?
And to your point, so can we go back to ten?
Back the other way.
To your point.
Yeah.
There's two wide exits there. So that, as inviting as that room is, it spills out into the courtyard. It, it's lovely. And then beyond the courtyard is the playground. Like, it makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, we didn't draw this up on a napkin. We had PPDW do extensive analysis. And, you know, it shows the effort that they put in. And I agree with you, it's a very inviting space. And I think that it would be a centerpiece, which is what we're intended to be.
I've been to some other schools lately, and I've seen their beautiful bond images up at the entrances to each of the schools. And are we going to do that?
Oh.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We can, yes, we should. I mean, these are hot off the press yesterday, so I really
There's time, but I know there's some concerts.
No, no, but it's a great idea.
If I tomorrow morning, we'll have them.
Yeah, no, it's a great idea. And Rena's been very pleased with the immediate positive response. So, you know, within the faculty and all the rest, this started really saying, oh, this is what this would be. And Dave, that, what you just described, I'll try to remember that, to use that, because that's really well said in a variety of ways. You know, but, you know, to get the benefit of the doubt of those who've been criticizing, we didn't yet have the images. You know, it was, it was a concept in one's head, so it's a bit like describing the elephant with a blindfold. What are we talking about? We now know what we're talking about. I think it's also a compliment for PPDW and Rena, I mean, who's a graduate of this system.
That's right.
This is a firm known for doing high level architectural work with historic spaces to embellish, not embellish, wrong word, to add to, strengthen that space without, you know, undermining it, which is, I think, what you captured so well in that description. And I think, yes, very much, we want to make these now very visible, have them posted, have them where they are, with a few narrative corrections such as you flash.
Yeah, then the middle school, high school entrance, right, that unified one, kind of, at this point, because of the construction. The elementary school, but what about the library? If they would be willing to partner with us, because so many families go in there. What about the community center, where there's so much programming for seniors and art?
Oh, you're right.
Right? So everyone can really have a sense. Maybe Food Town will let us put it there. They're a community player. I don't know if we're allowed to do that, but I think seeing these is so important. And all of your comments have been really helpful. But also, when you look at these slides back, the cafeteria is pretty simple. It's not ornate. It's a wonderful place for kids to eat, but it's very simple. And I think people have been worried about that. And I think this will probably make them feel, feel them better to see that it's a very utilitarian space.
Just to pick up on your point, Catherine, how about we put it in the, where the vote's happening, right?
Well, definitely there.
If we could have, you know, a big
Are we allowed?
Rendering?
Yes, we did that. We've done that before.
That's very smart.
Yeah.
But you read, maybe in public too, before the vote.
One thing that we don't have here, as I'm thinking, is an image connecting that entranceway into then
Yeah.
This space.
That would be very good.
Because basically, it's connecting back through that second level, and it's now very accessible in for usage and all the rest. So I think we need to connect that dot, so to speak.
You had, a long time ago, a connector, and like an aerial view
Yeah, you do.
Of where it looked, where the new entranceway, how it connected to the hallway. So if we can have more of a 3D rendering, or the perspective of when you walk into the new entryway, and what the hallway looks like, and entering into the cafeteria, I think that could be.
Yeah.
And I think that also would, because there's a little confusion out there about administrative suites being built and all the rest, correct?
Well, I'm going to get into that momentarily.
Because that would round out everything. Everything that's in this phase, you've seen other than that. But that, right now, what you'd see administratively, which I don't, you know, you'll do it better than I would, but that's about the middle school offices. It's not about, everything else stays the same, in terms of the business office, superintendent's office, et cetera.
I mean, I think what this conversation speaks to is that the point of the work that's going to be done in the FMS complex is not about aesthetics. It's about the point of bringing cohesion to a building that currently operates like a maze that's multi-tiered and that doesn't allow students, staff members, or people who occupy that building on a day in and day off basis, to actually navigate it in a way that is safe. And in fact, we've had people ask us, particularly folks who wanted to show up at the Blue Lecture Room, and say, why do you make it so hard to get down there? To which I responded to a community member, the very point of us wanting to do some of this renovation work at FMS is so that people don't have to take planes, trains and automobiles just to get from one part of the wing to another. And that's kind of how it operates right now. It's completely not, it's not, it's not to pretty up the building. It's to make it a functional, serving, educational space that we just don't have. And as, you know, everybody has spoken to, it's also a function of a building that's a hundred years old. And so it's a hodgepodge mixture of like, well, we did this in the eighties, and we did this in the thirties, so let's just kind of piecemeal do it. And it, there's no unifying sense of how people get from one, you know, aspect of the building to another. So I think that's kind of what we're fleshing out in these conversations. And that's the point of the work, of the part two of the bond proposition.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, when we have back to school night, we have to
Yeah.
post, you know, three dozen students to direct people around, because it's like a, it's like an escape room vibe in there. Like, you know, it's really hard.
I had a member of the community recently share with me that when her child got injured, he had to navigate the stairwells on his bottom.
Mine did too.
Move throughout his classes.
That's right.
And that is problematic.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sort of, I keep thinking about the process that we've been through. And I think with the bond, it's been an unbelievable process to get to where we are. And for me, I think, you know, we talk about the part one of the bond as being kind of just necessary. I mean, just, and it is. But I have also come to feel that part two is necessary. And I, I didn't feel like that when we were doing, you know, when we were breaking it up. And I appreciate why we did. But I think it's, I feel so strongly that we miss the point if we somehow can't get, if the community, we can't get the community to understand, even with the burden, the financial burden, which will be clear, I guess we'll talk about that at some point, too, what it actually costs people.
I can fill you in on that.
Yeah. But I just want to say one more thing, that it's just so hard when people in the community who are opposed to it keep coming back to the fancy glass atrium building, and now we see what it is. Or that we're not really having, we're just having one new classroom, not five or six new classrooms. And that this, that kind of information is still out there. And it's just a misrepresentation of the fact that we really need the instructional space. And the fact that, which I've said at other board meetings, but that people really have to understand from, like, the time when my kids were in high school in Hastings, early two thousands, that the, the numbers of students who've been classified and the special ed demands, and what the, the burden that that puts both on the budget and the building to provide what kids are, need and entitled to in terms of space for, for teaching, for certain kinds of classrooms, for, you know, testing, for PT, for OT, for speech. The building as it is, and the system as I knew it, it doesn't, it can't manage it anymore. And so it's not just a luxury that we're trying to do this. And I think this is a really beautiful description of what it would be and what it would look like. And that we really have to try to explain to people that it, we're not, this is not, and it's necessary.
Can I dig into that, the thing that you raised? Because when, you know, we talk about, and we've mentioned a number of times, that the classification rate for children has doubled over the past twenty years even. And that's not unique to Hastings. But I think a point that we also raised is that the in-classroom population has increased. And one of the things that I think people don't realize, and maybe we don't have a good way of talking about it, is, you know, with special education, the model, the modern model, the model we use is an inclusive schooling model. So children get additional instruction in the classroom itself. And so let's look at Hillside. You have the two section of ICTs that run through Hillside in appropriately, appropriately sized rooms, appropriately quiet rooms, appropriately lit rooms. Those student populations move into middle school, where those ICT classrooms are now in tiny classrooms with two teachers, sometimes one or two additional adults. You can have, you can have the, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight children, but there's thirty-two people in that room. It is poorly lit. It is, those rooms run hot, run cold. That's the environment that we, that we toss these kids into. So I, I couldn't agree with you more. It is, to do the right job by the student population we have, it is absolutely fundamental that those, that those changes get made. And so that's something I think we need to keep raising, that people always come back to the enrollment. Is it going to go up? Is it going to go down? But the in-class population is significantly more. And in the PTSA meeting, I had done a little bit of research on how much room we get when we fly on a plane. And it's about, depending on what plane you fly on, the actual square footage you enjoy, if you split it up, it's about eighteen to twenty-five square feet per person. And there are absolutely classrooms where we hit twenty-five, twenty-four square foot children. So it's like teaching children on a plane, basically. This is the way I put it. So we can dig into that. Are there any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say that December eleventh meeting, slide seven, is the connector that David mentioned.
That's a good number.
December seventh, slide eleven.
Eleven.
Seventh, eleventh.
Yeah, page seven, I think.
December eleventh.
Page seven, okay.
These visuals are amazing. And I just hope we can get them out on social media, everything we can.
And Catherine, you raised a question, I think it was, about what the costs were per, and so we've kind of, we ran the numbers, and this is preliminary. But if the entire bond were to pass, since we're considering it, in first, the first payment of it would be in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. This is how it'd break down roughly for, say, the average assessed house of about a million dollars. The, it would maybe be about sixty dollars a month. And it breaks down like this. The front entrance, as I mentioned before, would cost about one dollar and fifty cents per household per month. The addition and the classroom renovations, so we're talking about the, the new cafeteria and the renovation of the old cafeteria, that would break down to about twenty-eight dollars a month per household. The MEP work, mechanical, electrical and plumbing at Farragut and Hillside, which is sort of the prop one, the fundamental stuff, would break down to about seventeen dollars and fifty cents. And the fields would break down to about twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents per household. So, and as I was, you know, I think that there's such a recognition that at least the mechanical stuff is fundamentally, that seventeen dollars, it has to pass. We're really talking about, we end up talking about about forty dollars a month of discretionary sort of, sort of spending. That's what we're talking about.
So again, you're saying this is for a house?
If you have, if you currently
It's valued at about a million dollars.
Correct.
That's what it would be.
Correct.
And it starts in twenty?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yeah. And just to sort of close the circle on this, two years after we start, we would start repaying this bond, the last of the 2014 debt rolls off, which at that same level, is about a hundred dollars of debt, you know, so twelve dollars a month that would roll off two years later. So just put that in perspective. Melissa, do we have the, remember I asked if we had those two presentations lined up?
No.
Do I?
No.
Oh, the clicker's over here.
Oh, okay.
So is it, is it just like, they go through there?
I have some, I don't know where to look.
That's all right.
I don't think it's going to be on the presentation.
Okay. I'm just pulling up some additional.
So while, whilst just doing that, I'm thinking back to the, looking out of the cafeteria again. And a lot of the conversation, or the negative, or in the negative conversation, has been that this is too fancy for Hastings. But I, you know, it's changed my perspective. When you go in the Harmon Center and you're in the big main room, there's two gigantic windows on each side and you look out. When you're in the library and you look out, that is, that's a two-story window, although it's not an open two stories. The main floor of the library is all windows facing out, and the downstairs is all windows facing out.
You're right.
So it actually is pretty much in line architecturally, in a modernization of the growth of Hastings. So to me, it almost fits in with what we're trying to do by adding light into our spaces here. No one would ever say we would have the wall of the library be brick, right? I mean, it's a view, it's different. But this is a view into a courtyard, and it's letting in natural light. The library is beautiful because you see the view, but it's the brightness and the light that lends itself to the room that gives you that feeling as well. And the same in the Harmon Center. When you're in that main room, it is bright in there. And that bright changes your attitude of how you feel. And we talk about the health of our students. And we want them, right? Wouldn't you want to be in a bright room? Like, I would, I would assume so.
Yeah, it's also, you know.
Yes, it is a question.
You know, these commercial buildings are built to last a very long time. And, oh, it's set up?
Yes.
And something that's like glass, you know, if you have brick, you have to repoint. It's just, it's more upkeep, it's more expertise, it's more expense in the long term. And those things get very expensive.
And even in the bond, we
Really interesting point, Dave.
Through, like here?
Yeah. And even in the bond, we talked about, like, repointing and redoing. And like, we pulled back on a lot of that stuff, too, right?
Oh, wait.
Because it was too expensive, right? So we're, we're actually thinking ahead, we don't have to worry about repointing and, you know, talking thirty, forty years down the line.
Kai and, can Kai and Ella weigh in?
Oh, yeah.
I would love to hear any, like, what's the, like, what's the skinny in the school? Like, are people?
No one says skinny, Catherine.
Not a good one.
Okay, sorry. If you have any thoughts you'd like to share, we'd love to hear from you, too.
I mean, I'll start off. I know that, you know, my grade is about the least impacted by this of anyone. But there's definitely been some talk about it. I know that there was some confusion as to why it was happening now. In particular, just a lot of people are confused about the bond and the budget occurring simultaneously. And that causes a lot of confusion as to what's what. And so I know that there was some, you know, brief concern that, oh, we're losing classes because we're getting a turf field, or like, we're not hiring new teachers because they're making a glass cafeteria. And that put people a little bit on edge. But, you know, we're doing our best to clarify things. But, yeah, I think people are, for the most part, you know, a little hesitant to be one hundred percent on board. Just like, changing things is always a little scary. But I personally think it looks really cool. And I'm sure that there are plenty of other people who agree. And those who don't, I'm sure, would find their good sides within it. So, yeah.
Yeah, I guess you guys are both going to be, you know, unless you're going to be fifth-year seniors or sixth-year seniors, you know.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I mean, with who I've talked to, this hasn't really been on their radar. It's mostly just the turf fields. But with the few people who have known about this, they don't quite know what's going on with it. So they with it, so they have very limited information. But personally, I think it looks really nice, especially compared to what they've done with the elementary school. I think the elementary school has done a really great job of being more accessible and also more accommodating to larger grades. So I think especially since we have so many new kids that I found out, like, I thought we only had 120, like, at the most per grade, but now that I've heard that some grades have like maybe 140, I think it's certainly needed to have better accommodations for this, and it looks really good, so.
So I have an idea. We're racing to the end of the school year, and we only now, as of yesterday, have these images. Is there another student union meeting coming up?
Um, I mean, short answer is no. We kind of, you know, closed off student union just because the seniors are leaving, and now it's really just elections.
And you're May 17th? What's your last day of 17th?
16th.
Yeah.
That was close.
So, it's end of next week is-
So I have an idea. It's because I know Mr. Lopez cares a lot about this happening. So if you two would join me in this, given you are the BOE liaisons, is we, we, we have a meeting, ask him to call it for the student union, because you're not members, but you attend.
Yeah.
And then the three of us would present, and we would just do the images, we'd hit the budget tight quickly, how it's different.
Mm-hmm.
And then just do the images.
I have another idea.
And, but to get to the students and say, we're going to be pushing these out, what advice do you have to push it out even more?
Yeah.
Because we can push electronically these two presentations, I think, just to help have them see it, talk about it, give us ideas.
And I think, I'm so sorry. I think what Catherine was mentioning earlier about like actually having the images physically posted, you know, I remember walking into Hillside back when this building was, or this area at least, was still just an idea, and seeing the potential pictures of it. And it looked so cool, and it like got me really excited, and I like went to my friends, and I was like, whoa, walking to Hillside, they've got this like little plaque of what it's going to be, it'll be so cool. So I think that that would be really helpful in spreading the word as well. You know, like, as Dr. McCourcy, as you mentioned, like, things are digital, but I do think that having something physical would really, you know, especially at the entrance of the building, stuff like that would really help. Were you going to say that?
I don't know that it's possible now, timing-wise, but, Bill, I was actually thinking, could you have a, not a mandatory, but a voluntary school assembly for students where you presented this? I don't know if there's any way to arrange it.
Oh, that'd be neat.
But a lot of students might be hearing things even from their parents. And if we could clarify and show them-
That's a great idea.
Not just to the student government, because that also puts pressure on them to kind of have to, I don't, I don't know if it's even doable, but like first thing in the morning or lunchtime, something, I don't know.
Yeah, I can talk to Mr. Kleiman about it, and Mr. Winn. The trick is, right now, as we move into exams and everything else-
I think high school, I don't think middle school, but high school.
Yeah, just the time is so precious right now.
I know, that's why I don't know if you could do it.
No, like, I'll, it's a, it's a very, it's a good idea.
What about the Miss Stevens TV station? You could do an interview and then broadcast live.
Commercial.
Let me go to work on that.
PAs. How many people watch that?
Yeah, no, I, Jody, I'm-
Or TikTok, we could do a board TikTok.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go to work on that.
Not to embarrass my family.
I'll go to work on that. Both, yeah.
So I wanted to point out one very important thing, which Bill raised, you know, and there is, as the board knows well, and something we've explained, but I'm going to explain it again, is we had PBDW do a space analysis of the entire Farragut complex. Last year, this was presented to us originally in May. And what we, you know, if people remember, more than two years ago, we thought about doing a small renovation in, on the Cochran Gym. There were some rooms there that were in bad shape, and we thought about turning them into different spaces, whatnot. And there was a moment where we kind of paused, as a district, as a board, and said, we've done, to your point, we've done this hodgepodge forever, let's take a really fundamental look at what's going on. And we hired PBDW to come in and do a dimensional analysis of the entire Farragut complex. What's there, what's it used for, all day long, every square foot? And as part of that, they then produced sort of a maximal plan, giving us a sense of what kind of the maximal building envelope is, reasonably, right? We could put up a skyscraper if we wanted to, but it wouldn't make it much sense. So they looked at, what are the opportunities to expand this space? And based upon the interviews that they had with the different department chairs, teachers, administrators, what might it look like if you built this place out to the max? That concept was in this document, which is the Hastingsland Hudson Farragut Complex Master Plan Report, which we heard about in May, and they came back on the 8th of October to present this. And critically, whenever we hear these things, to your point, oh, that, we hear that the superintendent's office is going to be expanded, or it's going to be all these extra administrative offices, all of this stuff comes from people calling this the bond. This document is not the bond. The things in here, apart from what I'm going to show you in a second, have never been in the bond. So if we skip forward, this report, the last time we saw it was on the 8th of October. On November 19th is when we made the initial presentation on the bond. And, it's hard to see on the screen here, but you can see here, the Farragut, oh, it's too sensitive, Farragut Middle School, the entrance addition, you go down to the third line, the cafeteria addition, those are the only things that have ever been part of the bond process. All the talk about, oh, there's only one classroom, or it's all offices, it is people mistaking, willfully or not, the other document as the bond. So, you know, as you pointed out, the things that are represented here are the things that started in the bond and have been there all along. There is nothing else. And so the point of clarity, I hope that, well, I hope that clears things up going forward.
Well, I think it's super clear, and just, I think it's grabbing that in a very succinct way, and us pushing that out. You know, saying there was on X date with a link to it, this very comprehensive look, which is required and necessary, we have taken a slice from that. But any explanation out there that that larger plan is the bond is false. That is not the bond. The bond is drawn from that in a very narrow, specific, surgical way. I think that, right there, we need to be pushing out.
No, we do, because-
And Kara's been great about getting stuff on the social media and other places. I think that, that's a great Alex message to grab and put it out there.
Yeah, and I think to really put a point on it, additional point, you know, there's an email out in the community now that has a, has a, taken a stance on which propositions to vote for, and a large part of the reasoning is based upon stuff that's not even accurate and has never been accurate. And I think that speaks to, well, the quality of the information for one thing, but also the need for us to really clarify-
Absolutely.
-what we're voting on.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think the other thing is that, and we've said it, that it's been an iterative process, but if you go back and you look at a board meeting and you see, you know, the fields were like really, really glamorous, at one point they were multiple, you know, and that was like just a hypothetical.
Yeah.
But if you saw that presentation, you would think there were five fields or whatever it was, you know? So it's like-
With lights.
With lights, right? So we've really kind of, and it's very hard to follow, no one's going to go back and watch each and every meeting to follow the changes. So kind of the end result being what we saw, I think is really important, and I like David's point about, it did look from the other angle like it was a little more grand. This shows like it's as efficient as it can be, right? It's just, it's putting it in between the two buildings, capturing the light, and getting the access. So I think, you know, this should be the focus, and, you know, it's been iterative, but almost like nothing, you know, it's not even worth making that the breadcrumbs, because it has changed a lot and gone down millions of dollars with all the chipping away that we've done.
Yeah, well said.
You know, I realize that I feel sort of emotional about this, and I think the bond that we're putting forward is actually to make the schools sustainable. This is for Hastings to have sustainable schools. That's all I'll say.
Well said.
Good point, yeah.
Well, I think I, I'm writing down a number of things to do, and I think one for sure, beyond other things, is kind of what is not, what is the bond now, what is not the bond? So lead with the affirmative, which would be a reduced version of this presentation, really emphasizing the images, a few of the key talking points, maybe the ones the boards used. That is the bond, and linking back to the kind of larger, and then say, there are questions out, there are statements out there about, and these, and just with respectful politeness say, no. And, and the respectful path is, give people, tie it back to that larger master plan. And any educator worth their salt, higher ed career formally or otherwise, you build master plans and you draw from the master plans.
Right.
That's what we're doing. We're being as smart as any other higher ed K-12 administrator, board governing body. You got a larger plan, you work through it, you reduce it down, that's what this is. And I think that's what we need to be-
Yeah, definitely had our work cut out for us.
So, yeah, so Alex, you and I can talk a little more later about kind of what are those key, because you have great, and other board members, what are those key points? You'd say, that's a point being out there, we need to correct that. We lead with the affirmative. Here's now what is the bond with the images, and now here's what's not the bond.
Yeah, for sure. And we will do that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments to wrap up?
I mean, the other thing that I think is sort of, and we all know this, but from the beginning, the job was for us to scope this project, right? So, so, you know, it wasn't the architects, they kind of threw some things out, but we've really, in, in all of these meetings, we've scoped it with an eye for what is the tipping point for the, for the community, right? What is something that the community could vote on that is reasonable and meets all of our needs? So I think, just to step back, I think that is good context, that we actually did the scope. I was surprised that we were doing that much towards it, so, I mean, I think it was, it was a lot of work on our part and, you know, on behalf of the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Moving on to Dr. Zimansky, I want, if you want to, we had the tri-state visits this week, I saw there was a lot of information in here.
Sure, just a snapshot. There's a lot that's posted in the public record, but we did have the tri-state consortium come and visit us last week for three days for a consultancy. And a consultancy visit is largely predicated on focus groups, interviews, and lesson observations, so it's in-person interaction. And there was a bit of documentary evidence as well for them to look at, but we focused on cultural competence in our journey around culturally responsive pedagogies over the last few years. And 18 critical friends throughout the region signed up to visit us, and that's wonderful. They come from all over, and it is our colleagues, and they are here to help. So we, we've asked them to think about our continuous improvement journey in this area, and to provide some commendations and recommendations to push us in our work moving forward. So the four essential questions that we asked of them to support us with, to what extent does the Hastings curriculum reflect the culturally responsive sustaining education framework? To what extent do instructional and pedagogical practices throughout the district reflect opportunities for students to demonstrate cultural competence using the principles of the culturally responsive sustaining education framework? To what extent do Hastings students perceive their daily school experience as being reflective of the key components of the cultural, of cultural competence? And then finally, to what extent are district communications and methods of outreach reflective of the ideals of cultural competence? So we look forward to a report from them, which will come in about five weeks. I just want to recognize and thank so many people who were involved in planning, in execution, from facilities to technology, to the assistants who were scrambling, to data gathering, to members of the faculty who opened up their classrooms, who participated in interviews, various stakeholders, internal, external to the system. So lots and lots of moving parts. I believe we, we had well over, I mean, if I counted it, I'm, I'm taking a guess, like at least 100 people involved in, in the actual visit itself. And it, it's wonderful to be part of this process. It's one of the benefits we have as a member district of the consortium. And so, we look forward to the feedback of our regional colleagues, and I'm always encouraging our faculty to get trained, to be able to go out to visits, because leaving the building and seeing what's going on elsewhere and being a thought partner is really very valuable. So we'll continue to keep that work moving forward.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Moving on, thank you, students, Ella and Kai, being so patient. I'm going to open up for student report, whoever, whoever wants to go first.
Absolutely. All right, so I'm just going to go in like chronological order here, and I'm kind of focusing in on the senior events, because we've just sort of developed into our own little unit. So, peer leadership has officially come to a close, and we're currently working through the very difficult process of selecting next year's PLs. So we got so, so, so many amazing applications, and all of last week, we were conducting group interviews that were each led by a different peer leader co-pair. So it was so, so great. We got to match the faces and the personalities to the applications that we've been reading. And now all of those group interviews are over, we're on to the next stage where each applicant is having a one-on-one interview with either Mr. Conwais or Mr. Hunt or Ms. Mokler. And then after that, it'll be the official narrowing down period, and the results should be out like end of this month, early next month, sometime around then. So we are just about at the end of the seniors' time in the high school, and starting a week from Monday, on the 19th, we will all be at our internships. So it's super, super exciting, I'll be sure to keep you guys updated. And as we move towards the end of this month, I also want to mention that the senior prom is happening on Tuesday, May 27th. I am so glad that we have the extra days off, that Memorial Day weekend. That will be so nice, everybody. I've already got plans with my friends, we're going to spend like the entire day getting ready together, it's going to be so cute.
Better not snow this week.
It is going to be at the Glen Island Heart Club in New Rochelle.
Oh, so nice, yeah.
I'm very excited. My mom actually grew up and went to high school in New Rochelle, so she was like, you're joking, right? That was where I had my prom. So, I know, I'm really looking forward to it, and judging by the fact that it took like an hour to get to the front of the line and buy my tickets, I think other people are too.
Love it.
And last one for me, is another exciting event, which is our senior trip. So we are all going to the Bronx Zoo on May 20th. I'm really looking forward to it. I feel like the zoo is such an underrated place, and I think it'll be so much fun to like go back and revisit all of the things that we all saw as kiddos. So, it's going to be a lot of fun, I'm really looking forward to it.
That's lovely. Thank you.
So this week is the first week of APs for the high school, which generally consists of juniors and seniors and also some sophomores, and I'm not sure if freshmen or not, but there's definitely an increase in stress across the student body. So a lot of us have been certainly studying and cramming these past few days for our upcoming tests, so today I mean Kai at our chemistry AP, which that was an experience.
Wow.
To say the least. Yes, so we're all just kind of praying that the curve works in our favor. And then also, on May 15th is the Farragut Middle School 7th and 8th Grade Spring Concert. So like the high school, I believe they'll be featuring the chorus, orchestra, and band. And so I would highly encourage everyone to attend to really support our music community. And then also, lastly, like the seniors, the FMS 5th graders are also going to the Bronx Zoo.
On the same day? Just kidding.
Funny.
Almost.
It's on May 16th, so I hope that everyone's able to get their permission slips on time, which my brother's in 5th grade, so he'll be attending, so let's hope he learns something.
That's great. That's great. That's great. Thank you both.
What day is graduation?
I have to look.
18th.
18th.
June 18th, yes.
Oh, wait.
June 18th.
June 18th.
Yes.
The year ends so quickly.
Can I, can I ask a question? Kai, when is your last day with us?
Um, I am here through the end. So I just, I hang around, I'm not going anywhere exotic at the internship, I'm going to be right here at Hillside, so I still come in. And it's both Ella and I up until the very final board meeting in June, whichever one that is, and hopefully at that one, we will have next year's junior, at least on, just so that they can get some sense of what the meetings are like before we go full speed in September.
Is that process part of the-
Is that process part of the peer process you were speaking about?
So, no, that's something that Ella and I are doing along with Senior Lopez and a small committee. So I don't know if those of you who were here last year remember, but Eliana and I attended a dinner where we were the speakers, and we sort of talked about the importance of student liaisons. And so because of the bill that was passed, we had to make a couple adjustments to our application process. So Ella and I have gone around to all of the 10th grade English classes, and we gave a brief presentation about what we do and how they can apply. So there's a written application, and then we'll be interviewing them with Senior Lopez and one student from each grade. So that'll be happening at some point throughout this month, the second half usually. And we should have our selection by the final board meeting in June.
Exciting. That's great. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that at the high school, you guys had your final concert. And that was also very moving, very touching. You were very much missed, Kai. Although Hudson did you proud. They gave you a shout out. It is always something when you know they say goodbye to the seniors, and the seniors respond in kind by saying goodbye to the teachers, you know, who really influenced them in their musical journey. And particularly, I would say in this instance, since Mr. Day had you all as his first seventh grade class, it was a little bit especially poignant. So shout out. I got to hear Ella also, you know, who was there. Did an excellent job, did her class of students proud. So it was a really lovely, lovely concert, so.
I was so sorry to miss it. I had my final dress rehearsal, so I was unable to go. I was locked up until like 11:30.
It was a great night.
It's very nice to call out. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you both very much. And you're free to leave. I know you got APs. Do you have an AP tomorrow?
I want to shake off the AP chem exam.
You have anything tomorrow, or?
I have, yeah, I have AP literature in 11 hours, so.
Start reading.
I'm headed out.
Thank you both. Thank you both. Moving on, we're gonna open up for public comment, if anybody would like to comment. No? Okay. Thank you. We're gonna move on to business items. Let me just call these up. Are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through nine?
I just thought it was pretty cool about the economics club and winning the prize and winning money. Like kudos to those 10th graders. That's really wonderful.
Yeah, and to their advisor.
And to their priser, yeah.
Well done. That was very impressive.
Yes.
Maureen's not here, but I had had a question, so I don't know if either you, Bill, or Melissa could answer it. It was about explaining business item number seven in layman's terms. It seemed a little bit inscrutable, but I'm not necessarily familiar with that. The merging of those two entities that they spoke to.
Is it with the economics club?
Yeah, no.
It was written in terminology.
It's tied to a banking merger, as I recall from our Friday meeting. I don't have the particulars.
I don't have enough information to respond with accuracy.
Yeah, I think in general, it's a merging of, in essence, the bank services in this way.
Okay. Are you comfortable to vote on it? I'm comfortable to vote on it. I just, you know, figured if somebody could give more specifics, I'd ask for them.
Right. Any other questions or comments regarding business items one through nine? Is there a motion to approve business items one through nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on, placement services for CSC and CPSC. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placement and services for CSC and CPSC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on, next to a memorandum of agreement with the Hastings Teachers Association. Bill, do you want to do any kind of background?
Oh, I can do. This in public content now, Melissa?
Yeah.
Well, negotiations are done in executive sessions between the various teams, so I need to keep a lot of that there. But this is the outcome. This has been ratified by the teachers over the last two days. I think it shows a real promise and a foundation for us having very strong relations with our teachers as we move forward. And I use the word foundation, promise, because we have to keep working at it. And I'm saying that as an administrator, as superintendent. So I know the teachers are committed to working. I just want to make sure that all of us as administrators are ready to work in partnership. And that means we will have differences. There'll be points that, either particulars or grand items, we may have different points of view. But our ability to have you vote on May 6th on this agreement is far ahead of where we were on the last one. And have it at a place that I think is a very competitive contract for our teachers. We also, and this is all in the public record here, that ATB, that across-the-board adjustment is very competitive and responds to, I think, what's important for our teachers. We also, for the top step that's in that document, that is step 18, we've added in adjustments. We did not have that in the previous agreement, so that's very, very important. And we've made a few other adjustments. We've added minutes as it relates to the middle school length of class, as well as then the high school. This is to give us flexibility to solve a problem with the state. We were sub the required instructional minutes with the state, seventh and eighth grade. That required us to run an advisory program that was stopgap. It was the best we could do for the last two years. I think most of us were not satisfied with it. We know that most of our students and families were not. By adding those minutes, we've solved that instructional minute problem. And very much appreciate the HTA, in that case, working with us to expand that. Not showing up here is also the commitment to, over the next year, work together on different ideas that relates to the schedule for FMS and the high school. No definite outcome to that, but the commitment is there for a joint committee of teachers, i.e. union members and administrators, to work through ideas and come to some solution. I've been in this business long enough to know that joint committees often are sort of window dressing, and where do they go? I think there's commitment here to really digging into this. But it'd be a mistake to have any preordained answer there, as opposed that we are committed together to work on what's best for all our students that relates to the time and length of classes and how we organize that. But to get to that together, it's impossible within a tight negotiation period, several months even, to resolve such big structural issues. So those are a few highlights. Sylvia was a member of the team. I don't know if you want to add anything beyond. At this last go-around, we did not include a board member at the table. I think it was critical that we did. And so you see in the public record, each member of the negotiating team, both for you as a board and then for the teachers' union, our signatures are there. I don't know, Sylvia, if you want to add anything. I do want to thank you and compliment you, because I know it made a big, big difference to this process.
I would just say that the contract, like anything else, is just, you know, everything is a matter of compromise and honoring both sides of any type of negotiation that you get to, right? And so I think on both sides, there are things that we wanted to come to terms on. And this is the result of many, many meetings, many, many hours invested on both sides, trying to be fair, trying to be respectful. And, you know, I think that we came with an outcome in which both sides walked away from the table feeling that we were fair. We asked for accountability and that, you know, this is what we do to respect our professionals. And also, we believe that this is the type of agreement that serves the best interest of our students. And ultimately, everyone around at this table wants to feel good about that.
If I may add, again, I have to protect the privacy of the table. This was an affirming, how do we work together table. It was not contentious. We, as administration, on behalf of board, put down, put some things down that conceivably could have been seen as contentious or challenging to the teachers. It wasn't accepted that way. It was said, how do we work together? And, you know, it's a compromise. There are things that we don't have in this that, and vice versa to the teachers. But this was not contentious. And I think it's really important for me to thank the negotiating team that was chaired by Greg Smith for really working hard to make this as best a connecting moment, not a go-away-from-each-other moment. Again, it's a foundation. It's, we have to work hard to keep this going. And I'm optimistic, at least in the next couple months, what this agreement now will mean for support for some very, very key decisions facing us in the village.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the HTA? What's the, it's not a memorandum any longer?
Oh, no, it is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, because then it gets.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you and I are authorized to then take it to the next.
Is there a motion to approve the HTA memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to personnel, this is a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding our appointments, amendments, leaves of absence, or resignations? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to minutes. This would have been from last meeting, April 22nd. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the April 22nd meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to first read, this is a policy regarding, if I'm correct, advancement, pupil advancement. I have trouble calling it up now. Let me see. Policy 4750. It's a first read. We're not voting on it. Is there any, I don't know if anybody's here from the policy, that wants to or can give a little background on it?
I don't think I was present for this particular policy meeting.
I was not there.
That's okay. It's a first read, so it's there in the public record, and I had a.
Was I there? Remind me. I don't think I was.
Will this be back for the May meeting? So in the intervening two weeks, we'll have a chance to look at it more closely.
Yes.
Okay, it's just a first read, so. Next, in new business, this is the Westchester Putnam School Board Association, of which we are a member. Because we are a member, we have a say in the budget and also in the slate of directors that they recommend. And so we're voting on this, right? Okay, so we are voting to agree to their budget and then to pass their slate of directors. Are there any questions or comments about this, or Westchester Putnam? There's an acronym. It's like unpronounceable, but WISBA, I guess.
WPSBA.
Yeah, I mean, no, you say it, but it doesn't really, doesn't really work.
Is there like a past precedent as to how we handle this?
We just vote on it. Yeah, I mean, you know, they've done it. They've done, they organize a lot of the.
Sort of like the BOCs.
Yeah, they do a good job. A lot of the data, they send us the budget books, things like that. They're pretty active, so.
Is it a volunteer position that they're, that we're voting?
No, it's not paid. No, it's volunteer, yeah.
Okay.
Interesting.
You could do this next.
Yes, in addition to.
Really looking forward to throwing my hat in the ring.
Let this be your stepping stone for the.
Maybe that's where Sylvia is headed, actually.
Little did you guys know.
There isn't actually any Hastings representation, so I'm sorry.
If nominated, I would not accept.
There you go. Case closed. So any other questions, comments about this? No? Is there a motion to approve the 2526 Westchester Putnam School Board Association Board of Directors slate and their budget for next year?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to second public comment, if anybody's moved? No? Okay. Going into agenda review, this would put us on the night of the budget vote. So this is 5:20. I see we have the DASSA presentation. We have the science research presentations.
We also, you know, we have two presentations that would be together. The robotics team and the science researcher are gonna present. And we've got, and we would pair those right next to each other. They're not sitting right next to each other on the list, but they would be paired.
Okay.
So that would open up the meeting. We, you've annually heard from Melissa Chandrov and students, Austin Hills and Christina Gackler already came forward to say there's some interesting and exciting work for robotics. So I think it's a nice way as we head towards the end of the year.
Yeah, it's always nice. And just to note, we're also gonna have the executive session on, you know, we got a lot of stuff coming up.
Executive session when?
On 5:20. Five o'clock and 5:20.
So the night of the vote for the budget and for the new, or the.
It's an action-packed evening.
For the seats. Where's, we're gonna meet here.
Yes.
What time does voting close?
Nine, 9:00 p.m.
And then do we drive down?
And then the count will probably be ready usually within an hour after.
No, no.
Couple minutes.
Ten minutes, fifteen minutes.
It's all a blur to me from last year, Julie. You're only had it this.
We will be efficient with you. The presentations will be lively and informative, and DASSA will be efficient. We're not sure about the instruction tech update. We may be able to pull that. Melissa, you and I can talk about that.
Yeah, because we do need to, it's a good point, we need to fit in.
Why don't we decide to pull that now?
Yeah?
Because we've, because we've got, or that would make four presentations updates. I don't think we want to do that. Yeah, especially given, so.
Yeah. Okay. So we're heading back to the right tab. Board of Education comments. Jody?
As always. So Bill, you were just talking about the HTA negotiations and the tone at the table and the cooperation and how things got done and got done more quickly. And just the feeling about it. And I just want to give some credit to you, really, because I think when you think about an organization, so much of it has to do with the leader and the tone that's set and the way that things permeate throughout. And I think that thinking about the HTA negotiations, the budget, the bond, everything about it, and the way that people have come together and worked together, I think we really owe an enormous amount of credit to you for your leadership and your leadership style and your willingness to work with people and to be open and to listen. And it's very much about who you are as a person and the fact also that you're a seasoned superintendent. You'll ever hear me say, not the white hair, but I'm not interested in green superintendents. But anyway, I just want to thank you. I think you've brought an enormous amount of leadership to the district.
Can I pick up on that also? I obviously agree. And I especially feel like, you know, the goodwill that you're talking about, that you saw at the negotiating table, to me, that's really the fundamental sign that the kind of, of where the district has evolved to. I mean, not just that, but to go through and take a moment to thank all the people who have gone through it. To go through this year with the building closed down, with hardly anybody not affected by it. You go into the schools, it's like a Richard Scary book. There's stuff everywhere going on, you know? But for them to do such a good job of it, all the staff, all the faculty, to pull it off and to do it with, you know, a smile on their face, it's really like, you know, I think it's certainly, we talked about why people run for the board, you know, for me, back when we came out of the pandemic, it was to see moments like this, to see the possibilities like this that exist. And so I thank you for your leadership, and I thank everybody in this district who has been a part of that. And I think this has been a stress test of the year, and we've passed it, really. So I'm really thankful for that, and I want to thank everybody who's been a part of that. Anyone else? Board comments?
My board comment is just to remind members of the community that this Friday is Hef's Hef Chella, get-together, party, fundraising extraordinaire for the Hef organization, which directly benefits our students. So if people have any availability on a Friday night from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., grab your best festival wear and gear. I hope to see all the fringe and boots in the world. But yes, it's nice to also have fun times, because, you know, we're here oftentimes mired in work that can be dense, can be heavy, can be, you know, very deliberative. And it's important to be so, but there's no reason we can't put on our dancing shoes and, you know.
And just tell people what Hef is.
Hef is the Hastings Educational Foundation, which is a, I mean, I should just send people to the website, but. Yeah, go buy the tickets, have a good time, and support our schools.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I would just note that board member Teresa couldn't be here tonight, but she was, you know, very interested in, in having a say in voting on these things, so I just miss her, you know, miss her tonight, but she'll be back for the next one. Anyone else? All right, let's take it on home, so is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you.